Meeting with an opportunity for public comments. Anyone want to say anything generally about the planning board or planning in general in Weston or anything like that? All right, then moving on to our first meeting which is an appointment with Jeff Shaw, Donovan Sweeney regarding the Weston Police Station. Are you Mr. Shaw?
I'm Al Eaglehead, I'm the chairman of the planning board and my other members, if it is themselves.
Roy Chaddell-Bash.
Steve Oppenheimer.
David Mendelson.
Right, so we've given this about...
I think it's a miss.
It's gotta be.
Well, maybe. We can always run.
That's not unusual, so.
Well, thank you. Again, my name is Jeff Shaw, I'm principal at Donovan Sweeney Architects with me is Brad Donovan, founding principal of Donovan Sweeney. Mike Clark is the civil engineer with Polaris Consultants and Brian D. Phillips is the owner's project manager. So tonight we just wanted to walk you through the project. We worked very closely with the permanent building committee and some committee called the working group to develop this project. We've held about a little over 50 meetings, all pulled between those entities made up of volunteers, citizens in town, so it's been a heavily viewed project. Steve Oppenheimer has been the liaison to the working group from the planning board and has had several, multiple meetings with us to go through the plans, so there's been some feedback and comments. We've also met with the town's landscape architect consultant and viewer and civil engineer consultant and viewer who had the opportunity to provide their comments as well. So I'm just going to walk you briefly through it. I'm going to let Mike talk a little bit about stormwater and the septic system and then I'll wrap up with some other comments at the end. So here are the boards here on the right-hand side. You can see the renderings of the project. This is on Route 20, right next to the existing DPW building if you're not familiar with it. The existing police station is there. This is a view on the bottom of that sheet looking from Route 20 up the driveway towards the salt shed at the top of the hill. The DPW is on your right, police station's on your left. And then the upper image is further up the driveway turned around looking at the west of the side of the police station. The initial design intent and the direction from the PBC was that this was to be designed as part of a campus with the DPW building. The architecture should be complementary but not duplicative so that we were to take some cues from the DPW but not just repeat it. We wanted this to look like a separate building because it's important, it's a police station, a public safety building, it shouldn't just look like an annex to the DPW. So we picked up on that with material choices in some of the metal panel. We've used masonry although in our case it's brick masonry. We used some of the blue appropriately to the police station as well. And buildings roughly speaking the same language in terms of the volume, the size, the massing and some of the entry strategies. So in general, that was the original design idea. On the left is the existing conditions plan. This is a survey of the whole site. Route 20 is the bypass, it's running on the right-hand side. The top is the L-shape, so C-shaped in the large vehicle garage for the DPW. The salt shed is at the back. And this is the police station, the existing police station. Approximate footprint-wise is about half the size of the building that we're, footprint-wise that we are proposing build. And it's tucked further into the site. There's an existing wetlands area here and where this is tucked in, it's almost invisible to the public. In fact, we didn't have the sign on 20 that was there. Our proposal moves the building up because of the size of it. It actually grows towards the street and fulfilling the other requirement from the permanent building committee is that the building achieve greater visibility and greater prominence on the site. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike to talk a little bit about the, some of the strategies we're using on the site. Feel free to ask questions if you have any during this. But to just introduce this sheet first, this is the proposed layout plan. This is a zoom-in on the police station site. So Route 20 is up on the right, the driveway to the salt shed at the top of the hill, police station here shaded in. And second building with a firing range behind the police station, it's an enclosed concrete block structure. Parking at the back, private parking for the police department around the side and back, public parking in the front and public entry here. I'll let Mike talk about the stormwater.
Great. Thanks for having me. So this is the layout site. The only other thing I want to add to what Jeff talked about briefly is as we designed the traffic flow, we wanted to keep the circulation in a common clockwise direction. And we've added some, one sign here to try to minimize traffic that flows this way to be a conflict. So that's the only thing there. And so this area will be the main parking in the area and back here will be the main parking for the police force. And then there's the overflow parking for when they have a training room and the conference rooms are used for other activities. This site, this plan basically shows the site as it is today. And this dash line is the limit of work, so we're pretty much in the site itself. We're not really doing a lot of work outside of the, outside of the constraints of the site. And so here is a stormwater plan. One of the main issues at the site is a portion of the site is in the city cameras' water shed. So we wanted to make sure that we were meeting the goals of infiltrating as much water into the site as possible. So what we have is, we have basically three treatment systems. We have an infiltration basin here which collects all the water from the roof directly into the, this basin which consists of 64-foot by 4-foot by 3-foot pre-capped concrete galleys which store the water and infiltrate it to the ground. It also picks up this parking area here and it's treated by, with the water going through a oil and red separator to eliminate the solids and any potential for clogging here. We have two bioretention basins. These aren't really rain gardens, they're bigger, they store a lot more water, similar technology, but they're, they're really, the design to act is a, is a storage and infiltration system as well as provide excellent treatment. So along those lines is, as you can see, the roof and this pavement area is significantly large. It's very difficult to infiltrate into these chambers. Chambers are expensive, so we wanted to make sure we also were cost-effective. So we have two overflows on this system. We have an overflow pipe that flows into this bioretention basin and allows for additional infiltration into this bioretention basin. Then we have an overflow pipe that flows into the existing stormwater system as it does now. We have, I'm sorry, we have a existing pipe that actually goes through the building that we're relocating that had a catch basin here. So we're taking a portion of the flow and putting that back into the pipe after it's been treated. And then the front of the pipe flows into the, a small bioretention basin in the front of the site that will flow into the wetland. And all the flow eventually flows into this wetland, but with the infiltration that we've been able to do, we've substantially reduced the direct mylot by smaller storms, 70%, 80%. So we've accomplished on the, on the water quality side of things, fair amount of treatment, a lot of infiltration back into the system and it kind of describes the stormwater system. Bioretention basins are going to be planted with native shrubs that are appropriate for the area. One of the shrubs is red twig dogwood. It's going to be, some of the shrubs are similar to what's being used on the police station site. So it will have a native appearance. We also have a small overflow parking area close to the wetland that we use porous pavers at that location, so the water there gets infiltrated into the ground directly. That's really it on the stormwater side of things. Any questions that I can answer?
I think what we'll do is just go back and ask questions.
Okay. And so then the last issue is, this is a planted plant.
I guess.
That'll show. So we have... So the leach field, the on-site wastewater is located right next to, and busts closely, the existing DPW facility. And the field will run in a small stretch behind the parking and the cemetery property boundary there. And then we have to fill a small portion, about 200 yards out to bring the slope out for, to make enough room to put the septic system in. There will be a septic tank, small pump station, the water will be pumped directly up to the septic system. It's below 2,000 gallons per day, so it's with a distribution box and a very, you know, very standard system, so. Kind of describes the stormwater and wastewater disposal ones.
Well, since we're on the landscape plan, I'll finish it up. As Mike mentioned, there is plantings in both the bioretention areas and then there's also plantings at the front of the buildings, the north side of the building and some trees along the driveway. An additional intention of the site was to close down the space between the DPW facility and the police station in terms of making the building approach the street a little bit more and some trees to make it a little tighter of a space to invite the public to park in the front of the building rather than trying to travel around to the back for more parking. So that was an intentional strategy. The idea for the, the landscape at the front of the building was to minimize the amount of vegetation blocking the view of the building but still introduce some scale, so we do have some medium and low plantings there and then the higher, the taller plantings are at the sides. In the back, there's an existing maple here and maple there. And then virtually do very little planting around here and try to keep as many of the existing trees at this existing tree property line, if you want to call it that. So we are eliminating a few trees in this area for the parking and there's one tree here, beech tree that is being, sorry, it was right here eliminated for the construction of the building. As you can see, the building pretty much takes up every available square inch or part of site that's available here. About the lighting density plan, you of course can't read any of this from where you're sitting, but I'll tell you that this property line here, this is the cemetery property line, there is no light spillage over the property line there. We've chosen the same fixture housings that the DPW has so that we are maintaining consistent theme, but the fixtures themselves are LED. They are shielded and cutoff shields so that they're compliant with, with property lines and also are dark sky compliant fixtures. And we've also chosen fixtures that have a color temperature that approximates color in terms of the DPW, so trying to minimize the difference that's going there and trying to unify everything. We are putting in several pole-mounted fixtures around the project to light the parking and then there's some building-mounted fixtures above garage doors and at parking areas in the back. And then the front canopy, there's some recessed town light parking lighting underneath the canopy. And I have some materials that I can leave with you that have the fixture cuts which we actually sent around on Friday as well as, as well as the literature on the dark sky compliance. Let's take you briefly through the building. It's the first floor plan, same orientation as the site plan, so you enter in the right-hand side, the vestibule, public lobby, communications facility, training room, police administration on this side. Getting toward the back of the building, detectives, sergeants, patrol, evidence processing in the middle, detention area, very fairly small holding facility, mechanical space and garage, port garage phase on the back and a sally port on the side, so the police department would take folks in, book them and then be able to drive out. On the backside here is a carport for, I believe, six vehicles, keep them free of snow and ice, particularly in the wintertime, they can get in and get out very quickly. On the second floor, wanted to maintain as much program on the first floor, that was one of the requirements, permanent building committee, so the second floor had far less. Up here bathrooms, locker rooms for the police department as well as the police room and technology E911 for their IT needs in the communication space. And then possible future expansion room in the corner for the town use or police department use. And then, which would be built, and then built, designing the roof space to be able to be built out in the future if the town needed the space to hold a second, full second floor. So the steel and everything is designed in the building to accommodate that, but we're not building it out at this point, it's a roof space. There, it obviously needs to be housing for the police department during the project, so there's a temporary modular, set of modular trailers that are being located. This is the back portion of the site where the salt shed is. DPW is in this location and police department is in this location. Come up the hill and in the corner of the parking lot or paved area, there would be six trailers that would be compiled together that would form temporary police headquarters for the duration of the construction work. This septic system, which is what Mike was describing earlier, would be online. There would be a pump station here needed to make the flow work, but we would use this during the temporary facility use period, not have to worry about actually storing and pumping out for septic. There would be additional utilities that can come from DPW as well as water from on-site to serve that. Minimal parking needs, this is sort of a negotiation between DPW and their needs for getting snow removal and other operations in the salt shed, so there's just a sort of minimal amount of parking up there that meets the police department's needs. But there would be signage for the public to be able to come through and up the hill to locate the police station and this driveway during construction would be maintained open at all times. We're showing you the elevations, although the renderings do a pretty good job of conveying the intent of the building. It's obviously a two-story building with masonry pieces as well as metal panel with a sort of staggered joint pattern. Then the front facade, rear facade here, the canopy on this side. So that's the project and I'm happy to take your questions and comments this time.
Okay, thank you. First of all, Steve, did you, as a member of the working group, did, do you have any comments with respect to where the plans are now?
My only question at this point is, has there been any progress in getting the beech tree relocated?
At this point, I don't know, maybe Brian wants to speak about it.
Yeah, sure. So Jerry's put together an RFP for, for the tree and label it as surplus material that we can sell to the highest bidder. That way there we'll have a place for the tree to go and have a custodian to take care of it rather than, we really don't have a spot on our site to relocate the tree. It's right in the way of our foundation and footing of the new building. So we're planning on having the tree removed in the RFP by July 1st before our construction starts.
That's actually going to be, go to the selectmen at their next meeting to declare it surplus. That's the process under the law, to be able to issue the RFP.
The tree we're talking about is, is located right here.
So the person bidding on the tree would include moving the tree in their bid?
Correct.
Has there been? No, sorry.
Taking it to their spot and fostering it, you know, back to healthy state. Right now we've gotten pricing as up to $100,000 to actually do it within our site and, you know, it's still not guaranteed that the tree could be saved.
Has there been any discussion about moving it to another town or property like the current field school or some other place?
I actually was wondering if it was a good candidate to be in the arboretum. That would mean that, you know, the town would have to pay for that and so I don't know whether it's something that the town would want to take on in terms of cost. Can you tell us how big this tree is? I don't have any sense of how big it is.
It's not a giant beech tree, but it's beautiful and quite mature.
Yeah, it's probably about, it's a fairly good-sized caliber.
It's a tree you wouldn't want to destroy. And it's also a memorial tree, there's a plaque on it.
I have to say that one of the first things we did as a committee is talk about that tree and talk about it often at the beginning. And that's, it was developed within the working group as a, as a response to the obvious beauty of the tree, what are we going to do about this tree? So there was discussions about changing the building and limiting about program on the first floor and what it really came down to was there's a lot of utilities that actually are around the tree, as Mike was saying earlier. There's a water line, gas line that comes through here, stormwater line and an existing power feed into the building and an oil tank. There's so much activity around the tree that once we realized that we were going to end up being under the canopy anyways, that there was a high likelihood we just were going to, even to the best of our ability to try to save it, we would probably, may end up with a dead tree. And that's the worst thing, to try and think you're going to save it and then two years later it's, it's poor and it's failing and not be able to save it. So that's when we started thinking of these alternative options. We researched the cost. We, and our civil engineer, our landscape architect in the town also looked at a couple of other companies to price out what it would cost to actually move the tree with proper watering and, you know, the whole nine yards. And that's what Brian was saying about the cost of it.
Yeah. Who said a memorial too? Does anybody know?
I think it's a former police officer.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh. Somebody that died in the line of duty or something or what was it?
I don't, I'm not an expert about this. I think the chief's got a person to ask. What he's told us is that the department would make other arrangements if the tree was no longer there to make sure that that was taken care of. He's actually spoken to the widow. So it's, they've, they've sort of taken that off.
Would suggest the town might want to try to find a place to put it. I mean, if, if affection for this police officer was so great that people felt that they had to plant a tree and a plaque in his name, it would seem a shame for the town to just not try to find a place for it.
Yeah, I, I think the chief would, would try and find a spot for it, whether it's on another tree somewhere else. I think that's when in our working group...
The plaque would be relocated, yes.
He, he did say that when he spoke to the widow of this officer that she would be open to picking it out another tree. It's not, doesn't have to be that particular tree. Or find another spot in this site, even somewhere in this site to do it. So I don't, I don't think he's wedded to that location specifically.
Okay. Kim, did you get involved in this tree relocation and all? What do you think the chances are of actually successfully moving it?
Well, any tree can be moved. This tree can be moved. It's going to be expensive, no doubt. The quotes they got sounded like about what it would be. It's a beautiful tree. When I went to the site, it was the first thing I noticed and we did talk about it during our last meeting about, you know, if you can't use it on the site, it just would be a shame to lose this tree. It's probably 25 feet tall, beautiful form. I mean, it's, it's in great health, it's just a beautiful specimen, so.
Okay, so the plan now, the selectmen are going to talk about making a declarian surplus and then you're going to, they're going to...
Issue an RFP and then the highest bidder would get the tree and put it in, plant it somewhere.
Dave, anything on the engineering?
No, Richard Sweeney's looked at it as well and I reviewed it and I reviewed, Richard's reviewed it, so, you know, they have some, Richard's comments they just need to address, finer details as it were and kind of be home free. It's kind of a nice combination of some strong infrastructure but also some low-impact LID components with the bioretention areas up front. They're providing some, they're doing well by the town, they're providing some extra treatment areas that aren't already treated, things like that.
Okay, good. Any other comments on the landscaping, Kim?
No, I mean, it's sort of the opposite of what we normally want to do, which is buffer and screen. There is a pretty hefty existing woodland in front that actually covers two-thirds of the front of the building. It's not going to be touching, it's in conservation anyway. And what they're proposing is primarily natives. There's a big deer problem in that area, so they're going to do their best to select plants that, you know, hopefully won't be food for the deer, but I don't really have much comment. Just the beech tree was the biggest benefit.
Okay. Got a couple of questions. Where is the wetlands delineation? It was, it's hard to read on this site.
Yeah, I think the landscape plan probably may show it the best because it actually shows up with the hay bales. So the hay bales, although they, one important thing I should mention that I didn't, I did forget is that there are two cell phone towers, two cell towers on the site existing. One here and one here. They're fenced in enclosures, they have to remain, we're going to, you know, be working with that altering during construction to make sure that they have power and communications, that sort of thing. But because this one is here, is right at the border of the 25-foot, no disturb zone, our wetlands or our irrigation control and limited work line actually goes on the other side of it so that we don't have to be able to be right up against it there. But apart from that diversion, it pretty much follows this line all the way around. So that's the edge of the 25-foot no disturb. The actual wetlands are just a little bit further down in there. So it actually comes out, you know, to here. The existing tree canopy is about there from the wetlands. So it actually isn't, there's a whole lot of screening as she said, but the actual line of the 25-foot no disturb is here. We are proposing basically no, really no planting along that zone and just vegetation, some woodland wild, wildflower mix from this area here against that line.
Jeff, again, one of the things we've done is pulled the pavement back in some of those areas and pushed it outside of the 25-foot zone and so that that area is not disturbed and the plan is to stabilize it and then let it revert to native, you know, native vegetation afterwards and store the buffers on, try to get the function there.
Yeah, and then this area of parking here is going to be planted, park, pervious grass parking.
That's not in the 25-foot?
No.
No disturb though, it's just outside.
It's just outside of it, yeah.
Yeah, so virtually everything's in the 100-foot?
Yeah, well, within the 50, but yeah, in the 100-foot zone. Yeah, but I think the 100-foot where it shows, shows up right here and kind of cuts through the site like this. So even a portion of the building is in the 100.
Is there any flood zone delineated around there, either 1% or 1.2%?
The flood zone is, if I remember correctly, so the area of work, there's no flood zone, but on the other side is that small brook that runs through there?
Yes, on the other side of the...
Other side of Route 20. I think there's a flood zone in that location.
It's also a very high water table there, isn't it?
There is. We initially looked at potentially putting a firing range. The existing station has a basement. We looked at putting, keeping a firing range in a basement condition. We had some wells data from the DPW project which we looked at early on. It convinced us that was a bad idea. So this is a store, a building built on grade, there's no basement here and the water tables probably, I guess our latest, latest data showed it, what, about 12 feet underground?
The board showed it about 12 feet underground. Our design elevation is between five and six, six feet below grade depending on what location we're at.
Right.
So for the seasonal high water.
Yeah, so definitely no reason to be on the ground.
Yeah, but you don't expect a police headquarters to ever flood out. I don't think that existing ones ever flooded out, at least I don't remember it.
Maybe in the base, not the first one.
No, and you're, you're seeing a substantial reduction in runoff from the site. It's going to be infiltrated into the ground, so.
Yeah.
If you have problems downstream, it'll help mitigate that.
Lighting levels here, lighting diagrams. Lighting levels here, lighting diagram. What's the, do you know what happened on the average light intensity of, of the ground? Do you have any ideas?
It's on the, it's on the ground. So I'll just read it up to you here. The, so calculated average illuminance is 0.9 foot candles. The maximum allowed is one. So we are compliant there. And total lumen count for the site is a little under 72,000.
Can I comment on that? You know, we're, we're abutters to this because right across the street on Route 20 is Jones Road. I live on Jones Road. So first of all...
Did you just identify yourself?
Oh, Marissa Mora, sorry. Nine Jones Road and I'm on the Historic Commission. But when we, they were doing the DPW, they actually, well, they, they notified us when they were having meetings.
Right.
So first of all, you should be notifying the abutters. So, because there are actually houses facing on Route 20 on the bypass. And then there are about six or seven houses behind there. We've had significant impact in light and noise from the DPW, and this will be closer. And I'm concerned that you want, feel that you need to expose this building more and pull out more vegetation. I actually think you should be doing the opposite. In fact, we had problems with that because they over pulled out and remember the vegetation in the DPW and then we couldn't ever get it really back because they have the fence and everything. And we have a lot of noise and a lot of light, and this is going to be directly across from us. So I think you have to look at those carefully, more carefully than the DPW did because we now know what, you know, they promised us, oh, that'll be quiet, that'll be not quiet, not, and very bright. So, you know, this, this is going to amplify that.
The police department program, though the building is getting bigger, they're not adding, you know, a number of more officers. They don't respond from the building. I know you probably know this from, from living there, that, that the police department operations themselves aren't increasing dramatically because of this project. In terms of the lighting, essentially what we're doing around the building is replacing the lights that are there currently with new lights.
Well, I'm talking about sort of screening and noise screening along 20 because that, that was a noticeable difference. And we talked about that. In fact, the permanent building committee, I, Mark Sessler and I used to discuss that. There are issues that come from that. And I think you should tell, you know, you should keep, keep in mind that that's, that this is a residential neighborhood still.
Oh, sure, I understand, yeah.
Even though it's Route 20.
The, the existing screening from the existing wetlands, obviously we can't touch that. And that, as I said, goes up to this point here. The only thing we're doing is actually adding plantings in this bio retention. And there is actually no plantings in this area. It's all grass with the exception of two large trees, which we're not doing anything with, which are in these locations here. So we're actually not changing anything that's facing your residential area.
Well, I, I trust the planning board to, to deal with it. I'm just saying, keep it...
Yeah, the, the structure will be bigger, no question about that. It'll be more visible to the building.
You're changing what they will see.
That's true. They will see a, a building.
I look out my window at night, I see lights like this across the DPW. They leave lights on all night long.
Yeah, there is a lighting plan for this in terms of a schedule. The lighting schedule shows all the lighting after, I believe, eight o'clock going to 50% so that there's some illumination on the site.
What does that mean exactly? Does that mean turn half the lights off or do they dim to a certain level?
No, they, they would be dimmed, they'd be dimmed to 50%. Yeah, there's an automatic lighting control at, at the time clock we do that.
What about on the second floor? I mean, the functions on the second floor, could those functions, do those have to go 44/7 or?
No, actually, second floor really doesn't have much that faces the street. There's, you know, the second floor is a window here and a window here. This is a, a window in a corridor.
Right.
Certainly in a stair, there's no windows there. Took the little one here. And really, nobody's, nobody's up here using this space.
Yeah.
There's a possibility that the town, if they choose, may put some IT function in here, which really wouldn't have an office function, it would just be equipment. So the, the, there's an opportunity here to have really low light levels in the building, not, you know, working light levels, just low luminance for an egress situation. So there's not going to be any, you know, very amount of light coming from there in the evenings.
Right. So that's one place where it could be minimized because then you're keeping the lights on the first floor level, which is where they are now.
Right.
The other, the other question would be, although the police staff is not increasing, is the, to what extent is the light, the overall lighting level increasing? Or do you, have you, do you know what the existing lumens are?
I wish I had my engineering guide. I do, I do not know what that level is currently.
Yeah.
Certainly get that for you and report it. I believe that the locations where there is lighting currently, we are replacing it just because of generally our parking is going generally where the parking is now and the street's in the same spot. But I, I have to get that actual...
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I do remember that there were some real issues with the DPW. It was, it was sort of a shock to people because they didn't really, they didn't think that the impact was going to be as great as it was.
Right.
When it was built, so we need to be, I think we need to be careful about that. So it would be helpful for starters to get an idea of what, what the light level is now, the base level, and then see where we are in the future.
Yeah. The, the, if I could just say, the, in terms of where the light's going to be, the majority of it is going to be in the back. There's a lot of light here for garage parking, police officer parking, which ultimately gets screened by the building itself. So in terms of the public facing light, we're trying to be as minimal as possible, just enough to light parking for, for, you know, egress and, and general...
So much larger is this building than what's currently there?
How much larger is it? I believe it's almost 50% or lower 50% larger.
And not more staff, but more program activities?
No, no. The, the issue, issue is that they have a hugely underserved spa, you know, their spaces is completely inadequate for the amount of activity that they currently perform in the building. So they're performing a lot of activity in there, a lot of services in a very deficient and marginal building. So they need more space for storage. They need more space to actually do things properly. If you went into their booking facility, you know, it, it just is not going to work for, it doesn't pass.
Yeah, I've done the fingerprints stuff.
So...
For legitimate reasons.
Sure, well, if you've been in the, you know that. There's, there's issues with records retention and making sure that those are stored properly, evidence, making sure those are stored properly for processing court cases and crimes, that sort of thing. So there's a lot of...
I was wondering if this is the most efficient way to solve those problems? I mean, this is a, a much larger structure, sort of causes some other problems, you know, fixes some problems.
Yeah, they, prior to our involvement, there was a study group that actually looked at the program very carefully. And my understanding is that they really tightened the program up. It was, it was a little bigger and this was, the belt is, is tightened about as far as it can go without getting to the point where you just might as well not build the building because you're not improving the situation. So, and in fact, of the many number of meetings we had, that was a consistent focus of at most every meeting. We looked at, we had an Excel spreadsheet with every room on it, with the target program, the actual number of square footage in the building. And we whittled those down so that in many cases it's within, you know, 2%, 3% of the original, whether it's lower, tires. The building itself has been scrutinized probably far, far more than many of our other projects have been in terms of the square footages. And I can say with high degree of confidence that they are getting every, every square foot that they asked for when they tighten that down and not anymore. And in some cases, you know, the chief would prefer to have more space. And they've been overruled, so.
In terms of program though, I mean, that's the question. There's a lot of second floor space that's not being used. It's deemed, in other words, for future use?
Well, in terms of the roof area, yeah. There's, there's quite a bit. And that, that was an initial discussion in the working group as to how much square footage belonged on the first floor versus the second. If you were to build the most efficient building, certainly you would not build a giant first floor and a very small second floor. It's sort of like, was built a, an even 50/50 split.
Right.
As a, as a program type, police stations generally want to have, you know, 70% or so of their program on the first floor because there's a lot of things that they just need to have access to, vehicles, prisoners, you know, the public entry, you don't want them walking all over the building. There's just a lot that needs to be on the first floor. And the police department was very, very careful about, we tell you this right when we started, they wanted this building, if possible, to be a one-story building, that everything was on the first floor. So it was a requirement from the beginning from them specifically to get as much on the first floor as possible. And so that's where we came to where we are. Now, it was a requirement from the public building committee to make sure that whatever building we ended up designing had the ability to be a two-story building in the future if the town were to want to expand it, to not be short sighted and, and, you know, cut off that possibility. So that's, that's why it's there. Whether the town uses it or not, it's built into the building.
Do we know what the footprint is of the roof itself?
I believe the footprint is about 12,000, oh, the roof, well, the, the whole building is about 12,000 square feet.
Sorry, I mean the actual exterior of the roof?
Yeah, it's about 12,000 square feet of roof area.
Has there been some discussion about possible solar?
We did discuss it, you know, as a good candidate in some ways. Some, in some ways it's, it's, you know, there is a tree line right here on a, on a hill. And some of this from the cemetery side may start to block it on this area of the roof. But certainly there's other options. Because of, you know, the concern of wanting to stay within the, the target budget for the project, we didn't bring that any further than, you know, the initial discussions. But I certainly think it could be an alternative. And we've designed the roof plan so that the mechanicals are grouped in contiguous areas and not spread all over the place so that if you did want to do TP in the future, that there'd be opportunity to gang it together.
And it can support the weight of the system.
It's a concrete deck on the, on that roof for a, an orig, a future second floor, so absolutely.
Where's the generator?
Generator is in the back corner. Sure, I'll point that out. At the end of the firing range, generator is located here.
Is it a gas fired?
It is. It's a gas fire.
Yes, a question?
Diana Chaplin, 26th leveling. What's happening in the lower level?
On the first floor.
The lower level?
There is no basement. The original building has a basement, but we're not proposing a basement here. The original building, there's locker rooms and firing range and a basement and training room.
Why isn't there...
Basement here.
Water table.
Water table's too high.
There isn't basement links?
Yes, you have a question?
Let's see, we have three questions. The roof mechanicals, where are they located in one of the decibel levels generated?
Off the top of my head, I do not have the decibel levels. But they are, this is probably the easiest way to show it. There is a mechanical unit here and there are several condensers here. So essentially, if you remember the site plan, roads over there, we've got trees all the way around us here, cemetery is to this side, DPW is to that side. The working group, PBC discussed noise on the site and felt that if we were to be, use the building to shield the neighborhood as best we can, that the, the fact that we were open to the cemetery, though we'd not like it to be, is at least acceptable.
Okay. The septic system is a pump system?
Yeah, the septic field is above the building.
Right, so what's the backup, the generator?
I think, I think those are on the generator for...
What's that? What, so the question on...
The backup system?
So it has, the building has a generator, so that's a backup to the pumps. And also if the generator fails, fails, the pump station is designed for an extra day of storage.
So there's an underground tank?
So that it can be taken care of. It's, yeah, in the pump, below grade is a concrete tank.
Mm-hmm.
And it only fills up about halfway in a normal cycle. And then if the electricity goes down, including the generator at the same time, then the, there, it has enough storage for another design day of, 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 of septic.
And is there a similar system for the temporary building?
The temporary building, yeah, there'll be a, a septic tank with a pump chamber inside that. The, will be connected to the generator system of the DPW facility. And because it's such a short-term building, the storage will be a little less.
Okay.
Okay, but the, the prime, the prime backup is the generator that runs, that runs the facility.
And last question is signage at the front of the building? I'm assuming that fire department is also EMS? Is there, if I'm driving along Route 20? No fire, oh.
Fire, no, fire EMS is, is just police.
Okay. Signage?
Yeah, there, there is a proposal for a sign. The working group, PBC has to take that back at this stage. They're, they're investigating some other options, so we're not presenting a building, a street sign at this point.
Okay, thank you.
There's a street sign there currently that's backed with, but I think the idea is to not let the sign...
Yeah, we would like to actually construct a more permanent looking masonry sign, something that complemented the building architecture that was lit from outside and lighting the sign from outside so we're in compliance with the town's lighting bylaws.
Tell me again the number of lumens on the site?
Sure. 72,000. 72,000 for the whole site.
And, and how does that compare with the, the DPW site?
I don't know the total lumens for that. It's certainly bigger.
Do you have more statistics for that?
Yeah, I absolutely can bring you more statistics.
72 seems like an awful lot of lumens.
Yeah.
For exterior, like they go glowing, you know, even with dark sky initiative, it's going to be a very bright place.
Is the average foot candle level on the DPW the same? Do you know that?
I don't know that, no. We were, we were investigating, getting the, the exact same plan for the DPW, but we just haven't turned that up yet. And that was giving us a lot of that information.
And the average on the police site is less than 1?
Yeah, it's 0.9.
Yeah, I'm listening to one, you just...
Yeah, that's what, that's what we shoot for.
So, so sort of point of reference, I mean, we, you know, look at houses that are bigger than this and we have significantly less lumens, you know, in terms of our standards, like 22,000 lumens, you know, for larger situations. You know, if this is a private residence, we'd be saying, you know, this is too much for this spot.
Yeah, I certainly see where you're coming. Let's get the numbers for you.
And the shielding, you know, I think is going to be really critical.
There is a huge difference between a public building and a private residence.
Absolutely, and a police station, yeah.
And in particular, that's what I was going to say, particularly for a police station, you know, though it is, we want to make sure that there's as limited amount of light as possible and as low lighting as possible. We also recognize that, you know, it's an emergency facility, people are going to come there with emergencies and they're going to have to have that.
Have you looked at what other police departments of similar size have for their lighting?
Well, we've designed quite a number of police stations and I would say this is not out of the ordinary. In fact, it might actually be a little lower than what a normal police station might be, an average police station might be.
Well, again, what we, we're charged with is trying to retain that rural character, which is somewhat undefined.
Understood.
But, you know, it's got a lot, you know, and looking at this looks very almost urban, but certainly suburban type of look. I mean, it's a much more developed look and stuff. You know, in your experience designing police stations, how would you rate it?
In terms of the lighting?
Well, the whole problem. Urban, suburban, rural?
Well, I think we were charged with a very specific, very, very specific agenda and that was to make it look like it fit into its campus. And so we were, we had a neighbor that started the architectural aesthetic.
I understand fully the problem.
Okay, good. So we're, we're saying, please come back to us with a sign when you have it and, and So we're, we're saying, please come back to us with a sign when you have it and the, and the lighting levels to date.
We can send you those, absolutely, yeah, so...
Great. And my only, my final question, I can't help but ask, if the, if the, if the gun range is pointed at the cemetery for a particularly ironic reason, or...
The shooter's face away from the cemetery.
Oh, okay.
Towards the DPW.
Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you really ask that?
No, that was, that was ritual. Oh, ritual.